Uh, shall we start the talk?
Look, he said he was gonna be here. He was coming to the conference. We have to find that.
Just making sure everybody can hear us here in the chambers. Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Everybody can hear me? Okay, well. I will now call this meeting to order. At six oh three. Welcome to the City of Hollister Planning Commission Meeting of May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one. Can I have the verification of agenda posting, please?
Certainly, Chairperson Hughboy. The agenda for tonight's planning commission meeting was posted on Friday, May twenty first, two thousand and twenty one, at nine AM.
Thank you, Abraham.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Munster, would you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes, would you please rise?
Ready? To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with routine justice for all.
My pleasure. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Okay. A roll call, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Seth Munster.
Here.
Commissioner Jose Fernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Roxanne Stevens.
Here.
Chairperson David Hughboy.
Here.
And I will note that Commissioner Salvador Mora is not in. Um, he did indicate though that he would be attending in person, so he should be hopefully arriving soon.
Okay, hopefully he comes soon.
Thank you.
All right, uh, ask for approval of minutes dated April twenty second, two thousand twenty one. Everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? I entertain a motion for approval.
I'm gonna abstain because I was.
You were abstaining, okay. Jose?
Yeah, me too, so I'm wondering if we need to wait for Commissioner Mora to get there because I was also not present at the last one.
Let's, uh, let's, let's, let's wait until the end of the meeting and we'll go back to the minutes.
Thank you, Chairperson Hughboy.
Communications from public on items not listed on the agenda. Does anyone fill out a speaker card? Abraham, in the virtual audience?
Thank you, Chairperson Hughboy. We have various members of the, uh, audience virtually, but none have raised their hand for this topic.
Okay. So without anyone from the public wishing to speak. We go into public hearings, number one. Site and architectural review two thousand twenty one dash three. Conditional use permit two thousand twenty one dash two. Crocker's Lockers Hollister LLC. The applicant is requesting site and architectural review approval for a self-storage facility on four point two seven acre. Equivalent to eighteen thousand six hundred, uh, eighteen. I think that's six oh one point two square feet. Lot consisting of four single-story storage buildings and a two-story manager's office residence. With a total build-out of ninety seven thousand ninety nine square feet, fronting Fallon Road. The property is located within the light industrial M one zoning district at ninety Fallon Road. Further identified as San Benito County Assessor's Parcel zero five one dash one two zero dash zero one eight. Sequel is categorically exempt.
Thank you, Chairperson Hughboy, for the introduction. I will have our Associate Planner Eva Kelly do the staff report presentation on this item. Eva, were you gonna, uh, manage the PowerPoint or did you want Paul to, um?
Yes, I'll go ahead and share my screen and share the PowerPoint now.
Thank you.
Is that working for everyone, full screen display?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, great. So, yes, as mentioned, this item is site architectural view two thousand twenty dash three, conditional use permit two thousand twenty one dash two. Um, the applicant is requesting site and architectural approval to construct a self-storage facility with four single-story, uh, storage buildings. And a two-story manager's office slash residence, which totals ninety seven thousand ninety nine square feet of build-out. On a four point two seven acre site. And this is in conjunction with a conditional use permit to both allow a self-storage facility within five hundred feet of San Felipe Road. As well as to allow an onsite manager's residence. And this project is located in the light industrial zoning district at ninety Fallon Road. This is the proposed floor plan of the storage buildings with, uh, potential future changes that you can see in the bottom kind of right. Or, uh, left of your screen, uh, that's a potential future change to the internal units for building E. The south elevation of the project will face Fallon Road, and this contains the main entrance to the site. Beginning on the west corner of the building, so this would be the top left where there's assignment to self-storage. There's going to be a faux storefront entrance with stucco and brick accents and a location for signage. And then they'll continuing on, there'll be a stucco wall which will be broken up by trellises along, uh, large stretches of the wall. And there'll be sections of architectural build-outs which have corrugated metal finishing and wood siding. Throughout as we continue across Fallon Road to the east. And the main entrance to the facility will have a tube seal rolling gate, which has a keypad entry for the patrons to go inside to the storage facility. And this will be located near the center of this south elevation. And directly to the east of the main entrance gate will be the two-story manager's office and residence. The main entrance tower will have, uh, wood siding and a glass storefront entrance door with a window on the second story. And the residence portion, as well as an area for signage. And then the main body of the manager's office will be stucco with the brick accents for trim. Continuing to the east of the elevation along the project frontage, there'll be another section of architectural build-out. With the metal and brick siding variations and additional trellises along portions of the stucco concrete tilt-up walls. Uh, moving to the west elevation of the project, this will face Technology Parkway. Beginning at the northern end of the property, so again, beginning at the top left of your screen and moving to the right and then down below, left to right. Um, there'll be a concrete tilt-up wall which forms the end of building B. And then this will have a central architectural build-out with wood siding and a location for signage. And to the south of building B, this will be a secondary emergency access gate with similar tube fencing. And then the remainder of the elevation of the street facing side of building E. And this will contain portions of concrete tilt-up wall, which is broken by trellises, architectural build-outs of metal, wood, and brick finishes, similar to the build-outs on the front elevation. And finally, on the southwest corner of the site and lower right-hand side of your screen. Um, that is at the corner of Technology Parkway and Fallon Road, and there'll be a faux storefront that wraps around. From the south elevation to this west elevation with stucco siding and another location for signage. Finally, the east elevation will face private property, and this contains only concrete tilt-up walls, as you can see. And this elevation is not visible from the right-of-way, so it is just a plain, um, rear slash side of the building. The interior elevations of each of the storage buildings consist of metal roll-up doors for various storage units. And all of the interior entrance doors, which leads to the interior storage units, will be double metal swing doors with lighted entryways. And each building will have a galvanized sheet metal wall caps to trim the elevation. The landscaping on the site will consist of various trees, shrubs, vines, and ground cover. And there'll be a total of twenty nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight square feet of landscaping throughout the site. And that is sixteen percent lot coverage of landscaping, which exceeds the ten percent requirement of section seventeen ten oh three oh of the municipal code. And the landscaping will be located along both project frontages on Fallon Road to the south and Technology Parkway to the west. Uh, within the setback from the right-of-way to the buildings. Uh, the landscaping will also be placed inside of the curved areas along the entrance to the property on Fallon Road. And it'll be within the parking lot and the manager's office. Um, City of Hollister Municipal Code, section seventeen eighteen oh six oh. Requires one parking space for each ten thousand square feet of gross floor area, as well as two spaces for any resident manager. For self-storage facilities, so for this use. And the applicant is proposing five parking spaces, which you can see here on Fallon Road. And this includes one ADA space, as well as a one-car garage, which you can see in the rear. Um, which is for the manager's unit. The project proposing ninety seven thousand ninety nine square feet of gross floor area, as well as a manager's unit. Would equate to twelve total parking spaces being required. Um, so the project does not meet the parking requirements of the municipal code. However, the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to reduce the parking requirements on the site. And, um, this because the storage facility is not anticipated to have an excess of customers, which need to park outside of the entrance gate. Um, in this parking lot area. The majority of the use of the facility will be used by the patrons who drive the vehicles inside of the entrance gate to the storage facility. And they can park their carts along the road and in front of their storage units. Out of the way of the main drive aisles, which are wide enough for other vehicles to continue to drive through. So therefore, additional parking spaces are not necessary in the parking lot area for patrons, and they'll only be used by a few customers at a time. Who need to directly access the office, rather than accessing their storage unit. Um, if needed, an additional vehicle could be parked behind the manager's unit as well, to provide that second parking space requirement. But there's nothing actually struck out on the plans. So this parking requirement two is met by the layout of the site, but it's not through a designated space. So that would be part of the conditional use permit request. The applicant is requesting approval, along with the site architectural view, for a freestanding monument sign. Which is located in the landscaping area along Fallon Road. And near the entrance gate frontage. The sign is, uh, six foot six inches in height and ten foot in width. And the sign face will be the top three feet of the sign with the base having a stone veneer finish, as you can see. And the sign face itself, which will be a total of thirty square feet. And that's consistent with section seventeen twenty one twenty of the code, which permits up to one freestanding sign. Uh, with up to fifty square feet of signage in this industrial zoning district. Or they could propose two freestanding signs, which have no greater than thirty-two square feet of signage each. And this is consistent with both, and there's only one proposed monument sign for the site. Um, in addition to the request for a parking reduction. The applicant is requesting conditional use permit approval, which will allow the construction and operation of the self-storage facility. With a manager's use on this property. Um, pursuant to section seventeen ten oh two oh. A caretaker and employee housing, such as being proposed here, is permitted with the approval of an administrative CUP. And personal storage facilities are not permitted within five hundred feet of Highway twenty-five or San Felipe Road. And the applicant has requested to, an exception to this rule, to allow the self-storage facility at this site at ninety Fallon Road. Which is about a hundred feet to the east of San Felipe Road. And. And so the applicant brought this item before the city council previously to request this exception. Because there is a buffer of Technology Parkway between, um, the project site and San Felipe Road. And Technology Parkway has existing mature trees and landscaping, which obscures the view of the project site from San Felipe. And it was determined that while the intent of the zoning code was likely to prevent self-storage facilities from affecting the aesthetics. Of the entrance to the north in a gateway of Hollister from San Felipe Road, as well as Highway twenty-five. This site is uniquely located behind Technology Parkway. And at the time, staff's recommendation to the council was to direct staff to bring forward a zoning code amendment to clarify this section of the code. Uh, if direction was given to permit this use. However, the city council directed the applicant to instead return with a request for a conditional use permit, uh, to allow this use on the specific project site. Um, on this slide, you'll see the floor plan for the manager's office slash residence. Um, again, administrative CUP is typically required for employee housing in the industrial area, but because they also require discretionary site and architectural. This use is before you as well. And the bottom floor will contain the reception and office space, with a restroom and a rear office, as well as the manager's one-car garage. And then the second floor will contain the manager's living space with a bedroom, a den, a living room, kitchen, and a full bathroom. Here is a rendering of the manager's building and the main entrance off of Fallon Road. And then finally, here's a rendering of the view from Technology Parkway. And then, um, there were a few conditions that staff is proposing amendments to. Uh, from the conditions of approval for the SNA, for the site and architectural resolution. Staff's been working with the applicant on these changes, as well as our, uh, engineering division. Um, the first change proposed is a slight modification to condition four, which adds the planning department, um, the city planning department for approval for changes to the project. This is our standard condition number four. Um, the next change requested is to remove conditions nine and ten. These are with regard to demolition permits and demoing existing structures, and there are no structures on the site, which need demolition. So we're proposing to remove conditions nine and ten for that reason, as they're, um, not relevant to the project. Condition twenty-six just had a spelling error. Um, the draft condition read contracted, USA North should be contracted. Um, but it should have, it should read contacted, so a spelling request changed for condition twenty-six. And for this, these, these next couple of conditions, the engineering department proposes modifications to conditions thirty-four, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine. Which consolidate some repetitive conditions regarding stormwater. Um, the modification here to condition thirty-four adds language regarding the water quality control board resolution for post-construction stormwater requirements. Um, if you'd like me to read it, I can, but otherwise, I'll, I'll leave it here for just a moment. It references, uh, post-construction resolution R three twenty thirteen oh oh three two. And then with the addition to condition thirty-four on the last slide. Condition thirty-seven with all of this language can be eliminated as it's redundant. So that's a, a request for condition thirty-seven. And then condition thirty-eight, again regarding stormwater requirements. This is proposed by our engineering department to simplify and clarify the language regarding stormwater prevention plans. Um, and this condition has been drafted by our engineering department, so it modifies, uh, the condition to reference a stormwater prevention plan. And eliminates quite a bit of redundant language at the end here. And again, with the previous proposed changes, condition thirty-nine is also redundant and proposed to be removed. And I do have these all summarized for you at the end, so don't, don't, you don't have to remember them all. Um, condition forty-four, uh, is proposed to correct a typo and modify the dedication requirements for the project. To say that they are as needed by the engineering department. Because much of the right-of-way along the project frontages on Technology and Fallon is actually already dedicated to the city. So they would be required to dedicate anything necessary, but, um, nothing more than that. Condition forty-six was, uh, proposed to be amended to state that the onsite fire hydrant should be privately, rather than publicly maintained. Um, so the previous condition has been amended. Uh, condition forty-seven regarding water sampling isn't necessary for this project, so it's proposed to be removed. Uh, this amendment proposal to condition fifty-five is a quick typo here, lines was spelled wrong. Uh, condition sixty-nine had an error where there was a requirement for a CO2 monitoring system plan. And, uh, for the fire department, this isn't a requirement for this type of use, it's more of a cannabis, um, use requirement. And so the condition has been amended to state that the applicant shall install fire suppression and alarm systems as required by the fire code. Condition eighty-one, this is a, sorry for the small font, this is regarding the, the Fallon Road and Technology Parkway frontage improvements. Um, the engineering department has proposed these conditions, um, amendments. To indicate the actual required road improvements on both frontages. So it changes, um, timing from issuance to final approval. Um, clarifies irrigation and street lighting here. And then for technology, it talks about the existing back of the sidewalk, because, uh, Technology Parkway is improved. And then condition eighty-two has been modified to include only roads in the vicinity instead of, um, on the project site, as there's no onsite roads. And finally, um, for condition amendments, condition eighty-seven has been amended to correctly reference the renumbered condition eighty-two. If all, um, proposed amendments are accepted by the planning commission, otherwise we will amend this to correctly reference whichever is the ultimate number. Um, for the continuing, continuous maintenance condition. And the very last thing is staff recommends the addition of a new condition regarding trash enclosures. That would read all trash enclosures shall be covered, designed to prevent run-on drainage, designed to contain any washwater and plumbing to the sanitary sewer system. And this will be placed between conditions fifty-one and fifty-two of the draft resolution. And again, if all conditions are accepted, all changes are accepted, this would become the new condition number forty-seven. And with that, um, staff recommends that the planning commission review the applicant's request, receive all written oral testimony regarding the proposal, and make the following two motions. The first would be to adopt a resolution approving site and architectural review two thousand twenty-one dash three. With amendments to conditions four, twenty-six, thirty-four, thirty-eight, forty-four, forty-six, fifty-five, sixty-nine, eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-seven. The deletion of conditions nine, ten, thirty-seven, thirty-nine, and forty-seven. And the inclusion of a new condition regarding trash enclosures as previously discussed. And then secondly, adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit two thousand twenty-one dash two, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Eva. Any questions on the staff report?
No.
Good.
I have no other stuff.
Okay. And I'll open up the public hearing now at six twenty-four. Any speakers on this item?
Thank you, Chairman, uh, Hughboy. Yes, we have, uh, some speakers today, and the first one is Ann Hall. Ann, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Good evening, Ann.
Good evening. Um, first, I'd like to say thank you to staff for working with us to clarify some of this language. As you can see, Eva spent some time on that, and we appreciate it. Um, but there is one condition I wanted. I wanted to follow up on. Um. And that was specifically in, I think it's now condition seventy-seven A. It talks about relocating the water line in Fallon Road. Uh, along the Fallon Road frontage. The water line is currently located in the right-of-way, but once all the road improvements are done, it will end up behind. You know, if it stayed where it was, it would end up behind the face of curb. And this is not desirable, I understand that. However, this location of the water line is not unique to this property. It's like this all the way down Fallon Road, including the areas where there already is a curved sidewalk. Um. But we do understand the city's desire to move the water line in front, and, you know, move it over. Um, but this seems to be more of fixing an existing problem than a direct result of this project. So the applicant would like to ask if this is eligible for any type of reimbursement, since it seems to be more of a capital improvement than a project-related improvement.
What, what number condition was that? I don't see seventy-seven A, Ann.
Chairperson Hughboy.
I think it's eighty-one, on the original one.
It would be eighty-one A on, on your resolution.
What is it, eighty-one?
Eighty-one A, and on page thirteen of fifteen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ann.
So it's, yeah.
Eighty-one A, third sentence.
Since her time is running, uh, Mr. Chairman, do you wanna let her continue?
Uh.
That way we can.
Yes, uh.
I'm not sure if she's done or not.
Yeah, so while, while we're reviewing that condition, uh, she has additional time. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate it, but that was really the extent of my question. I think we have no, you know, no issue with the remainder of the conditions. Um, but this one, again, we understand why you want it moved. Um, we're just asking, it's a big expense that we hadn't really planned on, and we were just asking if it was eligible for any type of reimbursement. Um, as a capital improvement, and.
Okay, any other, uh, that, uh, concludes your?
Yes, that concludes my question.
Yeah? Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, next speaker, please?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Hughboy. Our next speaker is Jason Noble. Jason, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening, Abraham, thank you very much. Uh, first, I'd like to thank Eva for teaching Ann how to unmute her cellphone at the general plan study session, so we can hear her. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, I, I was able to speak to some of the planning commissioners before the meeting, but I just wanted to reiterate that. Uh, at the encouragement of, uh, City Attorney Jason Efferson, we brought this before the city council. And, and even though Eva spoke to it, I just wanted to let everyone know or remind them that the city council voted five to zero. In favor of making the exception for the, for the project being within the five hundred-foot buffer. Um, also at the city council meeting, we brought forth, and I don't know if they're in your packets. Um, but we brought forth letters from many of the neighbors and businesses in the vicinity of the project, all in support of it. Um, I just wanted to point out that, that, uh, Mr. Crocker, uh, who, uh, has a tremendous history in construction of projects such as this. Uh, just, this is a class A building, and I, I think we're very fortunate to see a project like this come forth in Hollister. Thank you so much.
Uh, and thank you, Jason. And by the way, uh, normally I disclose this before the staff report, but Jason did come by the office, and he was granted three minutes to give me a, just for general information only.
Very well, thank you, Commissioner Hughboy, Chairperson Hughboy. We do not have any additional speakers, uh, Chairperson Hughboy?
Okay. I will close the public hearing now at six thirty, bring it back to the condition, uh, commission. All these conditions. Play on words there. Um. So. You know, I'm, I'm looking at the, it's a conditional use permit. For the, based on the use, but we're also looking at the parking reduction. And also, uh, the issue that, of the three hundred-foot, uh, buffer requirement that was, in my view, and I remember when that came up, I was on the commission at that time. Uh, I remember who, it was Charlie Scott who brought that up, and that was primarily for Highway twenty-five is the issue there. I look at the site design on this particular project, and it's nice to see that, it's a nice landscape buffer along Technology Parkway. and it's nice to see that. It's a nice landscape buffer along Technology Parkway and also on Fallon Road. So I, if you, if you look at the intention of that three hundred foot buffer, uh, it was primarily for aesthetics. And I think in this, if we look at, I know that the virtual audience, well, it's not, I can see the photographic displays here, but uh, I think in terms of the aesthetics, the architecture of the two-story element, manager's office gives it a nice focal point. I've seen a lot of these storage facilities, they, uh, I mean, you talk about the, what brings you back to the memories, post-war cookie cutter architecture. This isn't, this isn't that. This is more of a thought-out, well-designed project and uh, I, uh, I think, uh, I think a lot of work went into this, so I think it, it certainly would benefit that M one industrial zone by, by permitting this use for sure. The, the actual, the parking requirement, uh, I agree with the narrative there that's normally in those stalls are for parking your car right there, going into the office, signing up for a storage space or those, the business dealings, uh, to have a parking, parking spaces close to the manager's office does make sense, but when you're actually in the storage yard, there's, you park next to the unit and there's plenty of space to get around, so I don't have any problems with the parking. Uh, the conditions, I think the conditions are fine. The one that brought, Anne brought up, I, I'd like to just to say if we could, if we do approve this project, that we could approve it with the caveat that condition number eighty eight with eighty one, excuse me, would need to be worked out with the, with the staff regarding the expenditure of moving the water line. So those, those are my comments. Other comments? Jose?
Um, this storage system is like the one over on, by Morgan Hill, right? The appearance?
Correct. Uh, of a one-on-one between the end of Gilroy and the hospital?
Yeah, that's a very nice building. This looks really nice. I agree with the commissioner, except for the water line question. I'm not, I don't know a lot about that, so I trust the expert over here making the good points.
Thank you.
But otherwise, I think everything else seems to be fair. It is a good-looking building. My storage locker in Selina's looks like a bunker basically. When you drive up to it, it's like, you know, this is very pleasing to the eye, I think.
I, I agree. I think quite some bit of time went into the aesthetics of this project to make it albeit a storage facility that uh, has a redundancy because of the nature of the project. It certainly does have some nice features in the landscaping and tied into that, uh, I think it's, it makes it into an attractive project. Seth?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna have to agree with what has been said here and then in, in regards to condition eighty one, that I would just say that the applicant works with the planning department to resolve that is where I would be on that item.
Okay, Roxanne? That's quite a statement there. I don't, I don't know Roxanne, you don't know.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're, you're.
I can.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm just having like serious audio problems with my laptops. I'm trying to work with my cell phone and my laptop and anyways, it's not as easy as I thought it would be, but I have a really quick question about condition eighty one. I just, I just would like to get a little bit of information from staff about why that was a condition initially, because if, what Ms. Hall is saying is accurate, that it's not really part of the project, um, then I'm, I'm just curious why that is even a condition in the first place. I'm just trying to better understand.
Do we have anyone from Public Works that might be able to shed some light on that? Abraham?
Yes, we do, Chairperson Hui Boi, and thank you for that. Also, Commissioner Stevens, we do have our acting city engineer, Mark Falgo on the line. Um, Mark, the engineering department helps with the uh, preparation of the conditions of approval that require utilities and so, uh, Mark, can you hear us?
I can.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, so the, the water line is, from a city maintenance standpoint, would prefer, we'd prefer it to be under the asphalt in the roadway instead of under, under a new concrete walk that is a part of this project. In addition, the, the project is, is, uh, there's a condition to underground the overhead lines that are on Fallon Road and those, uh, that underground line will very likely go underneath the sidewalk and will be too close to the, to the existing water line. Um, that, that's the preferred location for the, for the undergrounding. So, we kill two birds with one stones. We, we, we had free up the area for the, to underground those overhead lines and we get the, uh, at the same time get the, the water line out in the pavement where the city prefers it for maintenance purposes. And these are, these are caused by the, by the project, uh, frontage improvements essentially.
Could the water line possibly be protected by a sleeve if it's under the pavement?
Well, the issue, uh, well, it could be, but I, that, it's not typical construction when it's under pavement. It's usually not sleeved.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any question?
And, and you know, part of the issue here too is that PG&E and the other utilities that may be on that overhead line are gonna need, they're gonna need more than a couple feet of separation between a pressurized water line and their electricity and cable and telephone, et cetera.
Well, that makes sense. It, it, from what I understand and what Mark is telling us that it is a, it's a requirement to separate the water line from the utilities and that the pavement, it creates a maintenance issue down the line, so, I mean.
Well, it sounds like it's, it's something that is very costly and I, I, I don't know that I would agree that we would take that condition out of, uh, if, if we make the approval. I, I kind of li, I, I do like what Commissioner Munzer said about maybe having, um, having to work with staff and try to resolve this issue.
I, I, I.
Because I do think it's a big issue. It could be really costly, so rather than just.
This, this is similar to the project we, we talked about for the Taco Bell facility about the costs involve undergrounding there. And then it took some time to look into getting some, some more research on, on the cost. And I don't think it's, it's a, a good use of our time tonight to, to analyze that. That's why I, I suggest in going, I, I concur with Chairman Munzer that this, this issue would need to be worked out with, uh, the building staff and planning staff, um, so that they can analyze this with more definitive information. And that includes cost.
So, so is this more of a, uh, because it seems like it, this is something that the city, city planning, uh, that the city would like to see probably with future, future projects down the road. Uh, are there, is there, is the city gonna make it a requirement to approach or are, has there been consideration if any other business or any other project that's currently, um, along the road? Are they gonna ask those businesses to do the same thing, uh, as what we're, we're asking with this development? And that's one. And then the second thing is, you know, because it does, after reading it and kind of hearing the explanation of, of why we want this done, seems like it's more that of what the city would like to see. So if that's the case, it's kind of like, hey, we're getting someone else to do the work for us or cover the cost, um, which doesn't seem fair, in, in my opinion. Uh, at least the possibility of either splitting the cost, sharing the cost with, uh, the, the developer at the very least. Uh, especially if, um, what they originally proposed isn't illegal or against any ordinance that we have. Um, I, I, I think that might be something to explore as well and at least be fair about it. Something I'd like for you guys to, to explore as well.
Thank you Commissioner Mora. Typically, when it comes to like, for example, the example that, um, Chairperson Hui Boi brought up on undergrounding, uh, in the past, we've seen that, um, normally it's a, it's a requirement whenever there's a project that, that's coming in, especially one that where there's a vacant lot. Uh, we, we require all the frontage improvements, sidewalk, curb, gutter. Um, you know, that's when we, we require a staff, what would be the, for the best interest of the community to, for the infrastructure of the community, for the safety of the community, what would be the best? And in this particular case, you know, the vacant lot that's in the corner where, where there's overhead utilities, we would require, it's a typical requirement that the applicant, since they're gonna be put, placed inside of a curve and gutter, that they underground all of the utilities. In the past, we've had some, some, some concerns in regards to existing areas like in, and where the taco example that you provided, Chairperson Hui Boi, where there's already existing overhead utilities over existing development. And so it kind of, it kind of, it's kind of difficult to require one. Um, there's lines, overhead utilities all along the road and then all of a sudden, because one project is doing some adjustments to it, require them to underground. It, it's kind of, it's kind of an issue. Um, and so, so we're, we're definitely considering that and, and that option. Um, in, in the case of, uh, parcels like this that are vacant and, um, you know, as development starts occurring, um, throughout, it, it would be, it's, um, we would require that same, that same condition to all the projects as, as development occurs. Everybody will continue to, to, um, underground. In regards to the particular matter on this, on the water line, uh, aspect, uh, Mark, uh, would, would they, to answer Commissioner, uh, uh, Mora's question, um, with the relocation of the water line, uh, to, to where it's proposed per condition eighty one A, is that then going to require then as, as others develop? I'm assuming that they're gonna be just required to be extending that line at the location where it's, where it's being proposed?
I would, uh, foresee a very similar condition of approval on anybody else that's, uh, that's up the road, uh, that would be adding frontage improvements like, uh, sidewalk, so that we could get the water line out of the sidewalk and into the road to provide a free space so we can underground that entire stretch. So, I mean, the undergrounding is, is, is part of the reason for doing this. We gotta provide a, a clear space for it. The other part is that, yeah, the city wants the water line out of the sidewalk. The water line was currently, was, was put under, under, uh, was, there was no sidewalk there before, so.
So it, it, it's a little different in this particular case, because in this specific case, you have a section of line that will conceivably be relocated because they're pouring a new sidewalk. But then, once that section of sidewalk is poured, the line continues where its original location outside the property. So it's not a shared issue such as the over, undergrounding the overhead, uh, overlines for the Taco Bell, because that benefited the other properties and work was proposed for the Taco Bell owner to underground those lines that would benefit adjoining properties. This, in this particular case, the expense that is involved in relocating that line is only site-specific.
Correct.
And then, once development occurs outside of that area, the same would condition would have, if the, depending on the location of the water line, it would have to be the same condition for any other developer of another's site with the same situation where the water line is currently in the location of where the new walk would have to be poured.
Correct.
So, uh, you know, I, I, I want to keep that condition because you, you, we need to have that water line relocated. So I want to keep it. Now, who pays for it? I, I, I don't, in, in, I don't think it's the planning commission's purview to say that, so I, I just want to, that's, that needs to be negotiated with either the city planning, building staff, city manager, and the applicant. I don't think that the planning commission would make a judgment on that. Maybe I'm wrong. I, I don't know, but I, I've never done that in my sixteen years sitting here.
Chairperson Hui Boi, I know that you closed the, uh, public hearing at six thirty, uh, this, uh, afternoon for this item. But we do, I just want to let you know that we do have a hand raised from, from, uh, the speaker. It's up to you and the commission if you want to reopen it or, um, if you want to remain, keep it closed.
I'll, I'll reopen the public hearing for this one speaker. Open up the public hearing at quarter to seven.
Ed Borisma? Ed, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Thanks for the time. I'm the designer of the facility. And I just wanted to offer to the city that the developer would be happy to offer a widened public utility easement to accommodate both the water line and the undergrounding of the overhead. As we don't really need that frontage, we're happy to offer that to the city for the maintenance of a water line. It, the expensive, moving a twelve-inch water line that's hundred feet long is a undue burden on this facility. Thank you.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing now at quarter to seven, or fourteen minutes to seven.
Um, Commissioner, um, Commissioner Hui Boi, so I just wanted to chime in. I mean, I, I do appreciate the comment um, that was just made and I think that that's kind of, um, the purpose of going back to working with, uh, with the staff. I mean, I think those are the kinds of things that I think they can work together on.
I, I agree with.
And if that seems to be a reasonable alternative, then I would fully support that. So I think, you know, having those kinds of ideas and suggestions that can make it easier for both parties, I, I, I think that's exactly what we should be shooting for. So I would really like to see them come back together and try to.
On, on that condition. Regarding that condition, you know.
Right, right. I mean, I, I, in general, I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a great project. I think it looked it's great. I think it's something that will be useful to our community. I, I think it's a good project. I just don't want to make a decision about this when I feel like there is an opportunity for some resolution if they just, uh, you know, there's just a little bit more, um, negotiation or some, you know, like sharing of ideas. I think it can get resolved.
It's, it's a little difficult to have this come up at this time when, when, actually when you think about it, ideas like an easement and such can be entertained in a further discussion.
Seth? I was just gonna say, you know, what the, what the last speaker had said, that, that just continues to go with what we're saying is.
Yes.
Is they can work something out.
Right.
With the staff and
Yes.
in regards to that condition. So I think there's something that they can come to an agreement on. And I think it can be handled at the, the staff level regarding that condition.
I agree. Okay, any other comments on this item? I entertain a motion. We have two, two, on this particular item, we have the, the first motion would be pertaining to the site and architectural.
Correct.
And then the second motion would, would cover the conditional use permit.
That's correct, Chairperson Hui Boi. And, uh, we do have the recommendation on the screen as well.
That's, uh, PC Res- Resolution twenty twenty one dash three?
Yeah, for the resolution number is actually, um, this one's gonna be, uh, for Saturn Architecture twenty twenty one dash three would be resolution number twenty twenty one dash twelve.
I will make the motion to adopt a resolution approving site and architectural review twenty twenty one dash three with the amendments and conditions to four, twenty six, thirty four, thirty eight, forty four, forty six, fifty five, sixty nine, eighty one with the, uh, conditions that we spoke about, that applicant works with the staff. Um, conditions eighty two and eighty seven and the deletions of the conditions nine, ten, thirty seven, thirty nine, and forty seven. And the, the inclusion of the new condition regarding the trash enclosure as discussed.
Can I have a motion? Further discussion on that motion? Do I have a second?
I second.
I'll say second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the item has been approved.
Chairperson Hui Boi, can we do a roll call vote for the Zoom, please?
Most certainly. Roll call on this vote, please Abraham.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Munzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Chairperson Hui Boi?
Aye.
Thank you. Taking unanimous approval.
Congratulations and good luck on your project.
Yeah, congratulations. Congratulations.
Good job. Now, we go on to.
The second one is for this conditional use permit. Uh Commissioner Hugh Boy?
Oh, the conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
I entertain a motion for the conditional use permit.
I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution approving conditional use permit twenty twenty-one dash two subject to the findings and conditions contained in the draft resolution.
I have a motion. Any further discussion on that motion? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Conditional use permit has been.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hugh Boy, Jason Epperson here. Uh Ms. Kelly was correct. Since we are on Zoom and some of the commissioners are via Zoom, I'd ask that all votes this evening be done by by roll call, please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney Epperson. Uh and just for the record, that is for conditional use permit number twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash two is PC resolution number twenty twenty-one dash thirteen. And with that, we will start a roll call vote, and we'll start with Commissioner Seth Munzer.
Aye.
Commissioner Salvador Mora.
Aye.
Commissioner Jose Fernandez.
Aye.
Commissioner Roxanne Stevens.
Roxanne?
Aye.
And Chairperson David Hugh Boy.
Aye.
Thank you. The vote is unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, very well. Thank you. Now we go on to item number two, tentative map twenty twenty-one dash one, conditional use permit twenty twenty-one dash six for a planned unit development, site and architectural review twenty twenty-one dash four. Located at sixteen twenty Buena Vista LLC, the applicant is requesting project approval to subdivide an eleven point one oh acre parcel into one hundred and thirty multifamily units across forty-eight duplex and triplex buildings. The applicant is requesting conditional use permit for a planned unit development approval to request flexibility with the city of Hollister setback requirements. This project site is located within the medium-density residential performance overlay R three dash M slash PZ zoning district at sixteen twenty Buena Vista Road. Further identified as San Benito County Assessor Parcel Number zero one nine dash one one zero dash zero three one. Sequo mitigated negative declaration.
Thank you, Chairperson Hugh Boy. We'll have our colleague Eva Kelly do the presentation on this item as well.
Thank you. Yes, item two is for a tentative map conditional use permit for planned unit development and site and architectural view. And this applicant is proposing to subdivide an eleven point one acre parcel into one hundred and thirty multifamily units across forty-eight duplex and triplex triplex buildings. And the applicant is requesting conditional use permit for planned unit development approval to request flexibility within the city of Hollister setback requirements. And the project site is located at sixteen twenty Buena Vista Road, as you can see on your screen, on the north side of Buena Vista, within the medium-density residential performance overlay, the R three MPZ zoning district. The applicant, again, the site is eleven point ten acres and it's supposedly subdivide subdivided into forty-eight lots, which will have multifamily development, and there'll be twenty-eight additional parcels, which will be for open space and landscaping throughout the site. The project will provide private roads throughout the project site, and it will have access off of Buena Vista Road to the south here, um which is directly across from Vista B Lane. And um it will also have direct access to Carriage Road here, which is in the currently under construction Mirabella Two, also called the Westfield subdivision, which is directly to the east of the project site. The project will contain a total of fourteen duplexes, so twenty-eight units, and thirty-four triplexes, which is a hundred and two units, which is a total of a hundred and thirty multifamily units throughout the whole project. The project includes parcel L fifteen here on the east boundary, which is a twenty-five thousand four hundred and sixty square foot parcel, about point six acres, which will expand the public park within the Mirabella Two subdivision to the east to create a total public park area of about three acres. And the applicant will provide a twenty-foot privately maintained landscape buffer here along the south, along Buena Vista Road, which is between the right-of-way and the proposed sound wall to help eliminate the visual impact of the sound wall along the corridor and to provide a natural area which can be improved for passive recreation and increase the comfort of pedestrians using the area. So that it there's an eighty-four foot right-of-way on Buena Vista, and then the applicant's proposing this additional twenty-foot privately maintained landscape buffer between the sound wall. A conditional use permit for a planned unit development, the CUP for PUD, allows for developments to have some flexibility within the general development and site layout standards while protecting the integrity and the character of residential areas in the city. It encourages innovation and development of affordable housing or housing that's more affordable compared to standard market rate single-family homes, and it also ensures consistency with the general plan. For example, the minimum lot size requirements within the medium-density R three zoning district are five thousand square feet for a single unit, sixty-eight hundred square feet for two units, and ten thousand square feet for three units. And the performance overlay zoning district allows for a CUP for PUD to create variation that allows unique housing developments. The applicant's requesting the following variations um for development requirements for the project. They are requesting a reduction in the minimum lot size for um the smallest duplex lot. They're proposing thirty-one hundred and sixty-five square feet. And for the smallest triplex lot in the subdivision, they're proposing forty-six hundred and fifty-three square feet. Their request is in compliance with section seventeen fourteen oh ten uh oh one oh, which is um the section regarding residential performance overlay zoning districts and PUDs. And this allows a reduction for the PUD um for the lot size to no less than twenty-five hundred square feet. So thirty-one hundred and forty-six hundred, they're still above that twenty-five hundred minimum that they could request approval from the planning commission for. And so they are requesting a reduction from the standard lot size to their um smaller lots. The overall density of the development is still eleven point seven units per acre, um which is consistent with the medium-density residential zoning district, which allows between eight to twelve units per acre. So despite their lot size reduction request, they're still maintaining the integrity of the medium-density residential. And actually, this allows them to get up to that higher end. Uh in addition to lot size uh minimal variation, the applicant's also requesting variations in setbacks and lot coverage from the archery standards. Um looking at the screen, the standards you see before you are modified from the draft resolution and the staff report. Um over the past few days, staffs have been working with the applicant to clarify the required setbacks for the proposal. And in order to accommodate some of the architectural features shown in the plans, there are additional considerations for the second floor cantilevers, as well as architectural features encroachments which are being proposed to you tonight. Um condition number five of the CUP resolution, and I'll also show that again near the end of the presentation, is proposed to be modified to the setback you see on the screen and also on the following slide. So for the front yard setback to the residence, they are proposing a uh reduction from standard fifteen feet to three feet with also an allowance for second floor cantilevers to encroach into that three-foot setback up to eighteen inches. For the front yard setback to the garage, they're actually proposing um two-car garages for each unit with no driveway space. And I'll get to parking in a little bit, but they do need our parking requirements still. Um so they're requesting to bring these units to the front and right up to the private roads with a three-foot setback request. Um for the rear, they're maintaining the ten-foot standard setback. However, they are requesting to allow second floor cantilevers and architectural features to encroach into that ten-foot setback up to eighteen inches. For the interior side yard of all of their units, they are proposing to maintain the standard five-foot setback. However, they are requesting that uninhabitable architectural elements will be allowed to encroach into the setbacks up to twenty-four inches. So this would be for um any porch features or kind of architectural buildouts on the sides of their their building proposals. And then for um corner lots for their side yard, our standard requirement is ten feet measured from the property line to the residence. And also for fences on corner street-side lots, it's also a ten foot from property line to fence. And they can give an approval for the fence extension for engineering, um if engineering approves it to be closer. The applicant's asking for this measurement of ten feet to actually be from the curb to the residence rather than the property line. And then again, asking for a twenty-four inch encroachment for architectural elements. And then for a measurement to the fence, it would still be the same ten foot, but again, measured from curb to the fence rather than property line. And then continuing on, these are additional setbacks that you wouldn't have seen in your um original proposal. The applicant along the paseo in the center of the project, they're requesting as your foot setback to the landscape area um rather than a five-foot interior side yard setback as standard. So they're still will maintain space between the units as it is next to their paseo, which you'll be able to see a little more clearly on the next slide. And then for porches, um our standard zoning allows porches to encroach up to six feet into the front yard and up to three feet into the side yard setback, but no closer than five feet to the side property line. And they are requesting an encroachment up to four feet for porches into the side property line, which normally would um be fine. Or it's a little bit further, but they are gonna get some of the porches on some of the lots will go to zero lot line or potentially to um about two feet from the lot line on one's particular set of lots. And but all those that are zero feet, and I can point out some of them, they're zero-foot lot line, but they're next to a landscape parcel. So they're still setback from the curb, just not from the the lot line. So that is their request for porches. And then, in order to accommodate the high density of units and the small lot size that they're proposing, they are requesting a maximum lot coverage of seventy percent. Um besides from those three lot coverage setbacks and minimum lot size, the project proposal is consistent with all of our other regulations in the zoning and subdivision ordinance. And so as I was discussing briefly the paseo here in the center, these lots, um they would be requesting a zero lot line, but as you can see, it's not that the parcels or the the buildings are right up next to each other. And then, um like this lot, for example, I hope you guys can see my mouse at the very top left. This would be requesting a porch encroachment to the property line of four feet. But as you can see, there's also this landscape parcel, and so it would be setback from the curb farther than the standard ten feet on a corner. It's just the way that the lot lines are drawn. They're requesting that encroachment allowance. So um that that covers the CUP. But because this is multifamily, the applicant's also requesting site and architectural review for the construction of the fourteen duplexes and thirty-four triplexes on the parcels within this subdivision. Again, there's a total of a hundred and thirty multifamily units proposed. There are two proposed elevations for the duplexes throughout the site. Um there's a farmhouse elevation and a craftsman elevation, and I have here the floor plans for you. Uh each of the elevations consists of the same floor plan for the two units. Uh each unit will have a two-car garage on the first floor, a dining, living room, kitchen, and a half bath. And then the second floor of each unit will consist of three bedrooms with a master bath, secondary bathroom, and a laundry room. So they're a total of three beds, two and a half bathrooms. So this is the second floor plan of the duplexes, then three beds, two and a half baths. The farmhouse elevation of the duplexes has the entry to the plan three unit on the left side here of the front elevation. It's uh recessed behind both units, two-car garage entries, which will face the private road whichever direction the units being placed throughout the subdivision. There's a three windows on the upper floor of the plan three unit. And this unit has an architectural buildout, a cantilever area on the second floor to break up the facade. And then, there will be panel siding that begins on the buildout and continues onto the roof peak and the plan for second floor of the duplex. And the plan four unit will have two groups of two windows on the upper floor. And units which face Buena Vista Road will have um some additional panel enhancements which wrap to the architectural buildouts of the right elevation, and you can partially see them from this elevation. The left side of the farmhouse elevation is gonna be made out of stucco material and features multiple windows on the first and second floor, and this is the plan three elevation side. You can see partially the covered entry for the plan three unit with the wooden post from this elevation. Uh moving to the other side, the right side of the farmhouse elevation features the entry, so a side entry to the plan four unit, uh which has stucco and horizontal paneling, uh long decorative entryway and small windows to the left of the first floor. And there's three windows that you can see on the second floor of the unit. And then there are also proposed shutter and paneling and enhancements here, which would be used on this elevation for units that face Buena Vista Road. Uh the rear elevation of the farmhouse unit um will have two of these cantilever buildouts on the building. Both have vertical paneling and a window on each unit. The plan four here on the left has a large central window on the second floor, and this has a horizontal siding enhancement when it's facing Buena Vista Road. And then the plan three on the right has two smaller windows on the second floor, which have some shutter enhancements where when we're facing Buena Vista Road. And the first floor of both units has a rear door into their private yard and a small square window on the left and a large window to the right of the door. The craftsman elevation again has the same floor plan as the farmhouse duplex, but the exterior is made of stucco. And the front elevation and the other elevations will feature some wood corbels in the peaks of the roof and under the second-story windows um of both of the units. The left elevation also has those wooden corbel features in the roof peaks, none of the windows um as trim, but otherwise is the same as the farmhouse elevation. The right elevation of this craftsman style elevation has again corbels, and then there's also some shutter enhancements for Buena Vista Road-facing units. And this also contains the entry to the plant four unit on the side. And the rear elevation again has those same craftsman uh trims and corbels. And then the plan four upper floor window here has some additional trim and shutter features for enhancements on Buena Vista. And then for the triplexes, I uh apologize, the staff report indicated that there were two proposed elevations and floor plans for the triplexes. However, there's actually uh two floor plans, and so a total of four elevations. So I'll go over those for the triplexes throughout the project site. So there's a farm si- a farmhouse elevation and a craftsman elevation for each of the floor plans. And each unit will have a two-car garage on the first floor with a dining and living room, kitchen and half bath, same as the duplexes. And then the second floor of the units on either end for floor plan one, which we're looking at here, the uh plan two and plan three. And for the floor plan two, it's actually plan two and a plan four. Um they consist of three bedrooms with master bathroom, secondary bathroom, and a laundry room. So these end units are three bed, two and a half baths. But the center unit will have one master bedroom and a bath, and one junior master bedroom with an en suite upstairs. So it's actually a two-bed, two-and-a-half-bath unit in the center of the triplexes. So this is the first floor plan of floor plan one with the one, two, three floor plans. And then the second floor of floor plan one, so one, two, three, with the center being a two-bedroom instead of a three. And then the second floor plan of the triplexes has the plan four here instead of a plan three. So the main difference in the plans is that plan four actually enters from the side here, but it has the same number of rooms and um layout, or not the same layout, but the same dining, living, kitchen, two-bed, three-bed, two-bath. And the second story of floor plan two.
Eva, this is Paul. Um it sounds like your mic is starting to give out. I don't know if it's your headphones or.
Could be my voice. Is this mic better?
That's better. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so um for farmhouse ele- for plan one, this is what was described in your staff report. Uh this elevation will contain the entry. Uh, this elevation will contain the entry to the center unit. And the entry to the Plan Three unit here on the right, along with the two-car garages for each of the units. And the Plan Two elevation has only one window on the upper floor and architectural cantilever with the central window and vertical paneling. Uh, the central unit has a a covered recess porch entry and some small windows on the second floor. There's two additional windows here above the garage, and this second floor has horizontal siding um as a feature. And then the Plan Three unit has vertical paneling on their architectural buildout as well with a central window. And um some additional windows here on the right above the door entry and on the second floor. And then to show the second elevation, which was not shown in your staff report. The main differences between the farmhouse elevation of this one is that um the Plan Four, the Plan Four, excuse me here, has a different window arrangement. And the entry is not located on the front elevation, but is on the side, but otherwise they're somewhat similar, and this is shown in a different color scheme, obviously. Um, the left elevation of the farmhouse triplex with the first floor plan contains the entry to the Plan Two. And has a covered porch with some wood posts and a tile roof. And the unit has two small windows um on either side of the door and some additional windows of various sizes on the second floor. And the only difference between the two floor plans is that this second elevation has some additional enhancements, some shutters and some siding enhancements. For units that face Buena Vista Road. Moving to the right elevation, this has a covered entry that you can see from this elevation for the Plan Three unit on the side. Um, and there's some small windows on the first floor of the unit and two additional windows on the second floor. And then this side on the right is where you see the main difference between the two different floor plans. Um, as this right elevation contains the uh built-out entry porch area for the Plant Four unit. And it has some windows in different locations because of the different floor plan inside. And the rear of the farmhouse triplex has two architectural buildouts, cantilevered areas on the second floors of both of the end units. And the central, um, they have a central window, vertical siding, as you can see. And the end units each have two additional windows um on the second floor, which have some shutter enhancements for, again, when it's facing Buena Vista Road. And the first four of the units uh are mirror images of each other, again, with a a rear patio entrance into their yard. And um a square and then larger window. And then in the center of the elevation, the middle unit has uh three evenly placed units and some siding enhancements for the second floor. And the rear is actually a sliding glass door um to their um private door. The difference between the two floor plans is that Plan Four um has its cantilevered buildout located on the opposite side. So back and forth, so Plan Three is here, and then Plan Four is um the floor plan slightly different, so the cantilevers on the opposite side. Um, but otherwise very similar to the the previous uh or previous floor plan elevation. The uh craftsman elevations of the triplex building is the same main features and floor plan as the farmhouse version. Um, but has the stuff of siding and wooden corbels uh that we saw on the duplexes, so uh a slightly different accents here. And there's some shutter enhancements that face Buena Vista Road, again, much the same way as the craftsman duplex elevation. So this is the front elevation of floor plan one. Um, front elevation of floor plan two, the main difference again is the entry to floor plan four is on the side. And uh there's a slightly different roof architecture. This is the left elevation of floor plan one, again, very similar, just corbel features, craftsman style features rather than farmhouse. And the left elevation of floor plan two has some additional placement enhancements for Buena Vista Road. The right elevation of floor plan one, again, very similar to farmhouse, just with the craftsman um versions of features. And the right elevation of floor plan two, this is where the the Plan Four entrance on the side slightly differs, the covered porch entry here. The rear of floor plan one is again similar with some enhancements for shutters and corbels and trim for Buena Vista. And finally, the rear of the floor plan two, um, this has the cantilever again on the opposite side here for that uh fourth. And then we also have a leasing office, which is located in the southern central portion of the project site. And it's right at the entrance to the project if you're coming off Buena Vista Road. It contains a covered porch entry and rear coverage sheet area on the outside here. And it has two offices, a work break room and a bathroom, as well as a waiting area on the inside. And the overall theme and materials of this leasing office matches the farmhouse elevations of the duplexes and triplexes. So this is the front or south-facing elevation, has a single window on a wall under the covered entry. And then three windows located in the waiting room area, has a stucco-based trim and vertical panel siding. And then the three other elevations, on the left, the spaces to the west, and has the main entrance to the building. Um, it has a porch area entrance with some vertical panel siding and stucco trim. And the remainder of the elevation is stucco. Uh, there's a small window to the left uh or next to the door and some additional windows along the building, as you can see. The right elevation here on your screen faces east, features the the covered outdoor shade area. And has some vertical panel accents on the peak of the roof as well as wrapping around the wall. And um there's also a sliding glass door that comes into this outdoor shade area. And then finally, the rear elevation faces north and has some paneling within the the peak of the roof here on the wall and stuck up the main body with a few windows. Um, regarding parking, um, for section seventeen eighteen oh six oh. Um, either one and a half parking spaces are required for each unit with up to two bedrooms. Or two parking spaces required for each unit with three or more bedrooms. And then there's also an additional requirement for one guest parking space for every four units in multi-family development. Um, as stated before, this development has a two-car garage for each unit. Which meets the requirement for each of the three-bedroom units and exceeds the requirement for the um two-bedroom units. Which would be the central unit in the triplexes. The total parking requirement for the units would be two forty-three and then an additional um thirty-four guest parking spaces totals two seventy-six. And then um, I'm sorry, thirty-three guest spaces. Um, and then the applicants proposed additional parking throughout. You'll see some parking areas off of their private streets located. Um, throughout the parking or throughout the project site. And they're proposing a total of three hundred and thirty-four spaces, including four ADA spaces. Which meets and exceeds the parking requirements for the development. And then they've also been conditioned to ensure that there's a minimum of ten percent of our bicycle parking spaces, which would be twenty-eight total required. So we'll work with them to make sure that there's some bicycle parking throughout the site as well. For open space, the applicants provided the minimum of two hundred and fifty square feet of private open space at ground level for each unit. Um, and there's an average of three hundred and fifty square feet per unit. So that's a total of about forty-five thousand five hundred square feet of private open space. And section seventeen oh four oh four oh requires a total of five hundred square feet of open space per unit. And that five hundred is divided between private and common. So there's a total of sixty-five thousand square feet of open space required for a hundred and thirty units. And after remove the forty-five thousand five hundred that they provided as private, there's nineteen thousand five hundred square feet of common that was required for the project. And as you can see here in the Paseo and these kind of open landscape areas for the private development. There is uh about thirty-six thousand square feet of private open space. Um, which meets and exceeds the remaining requirement. Um, so in addition to the private open space within the apartment developments, so these these larger square feet of open space that's improved positively here. The applicants also proposing to improve and dedicate um an additional twenty-five thousand four hundred and sixty square feet, so about point six acres here. Um, to uh expand the Mirabella two subdivision public park. And the public park dedication contributes to the applicant's Quimby Act park dedication requirements. And is in addition to those multi-family open space requirements of our code. So the improvements to the park do contribute toward the major amenity requirement that we have for large multi-family developments. And so the applicant's proposing to develop a new playground slash hot lot within this public park as well as a dog park for the community. So again, the applicant meets and exceeds the open space requirements of section seventeen oh four oh four oh. Um, here's a continuation of the landscaping plan showing the the central open space area and the expansion of the Mirabella two public park. And then I've zoomed in here on the landscaping of the entry to Buena Vista with their traffic circle here. As well as the leasing area, open space lawn for the residents. And then here's a zoomed-in view of the proposed public park improvements for the point-six acre dedication. The applicant's proposing to construct a playground area here with a couple of the playgrounds equipments. And then um there'll also be a fenced dog park here that extends into the um southeast corner of the existing park area off Carriage Road. So overall, the applicant will be kind of redeveloping and redesigning this park dedication to make a big reacre park for the community. Um, the following slides are just some renderings that the applicant has provided, mostly showing this landscape buffer. Proposed along Buena Vista Road between the right-of-way and the sound wall. Um, as you can see, you can't see the sound wall um to reduce the visual impact of that sound wall along this development. So this elevation is looking east. Uh, this is looking west at our private entry road here. Here's an overview rendering of the entrance and the traffic circle as well as the landscaping. And then finally, a view looking kind of west or north at the entrance. And um the multi-family residential units that are proposed for this development are highly desired in the city of Hollister. It's providing much-needed rental housing for the community. There have been very few um multi-family development proposals overall in the recent years. Um, within Hollister, and many of those have been small projects that are about uh three, two or three units, usually less than five or ten units for each project. And there really have been few large multi-family residential projects. Um, there were a couple, uh, including the Viciti Oral Apartments and two cheaper multi-family developments. Um, but each of those proposals provided affordable housing. And while we understand as staff that affordable rental housing is also highly needed, highly needed in the community. Um, this project proposes a large number of market rate rental units, which is also highly needed in the community. Um, there are a few existing apartment complexes available at unrestricted market rate income within the community. And those that do exist have long waiting lists and rarely have units which become available. So this project will help to offset some of the need in the community for this type of unit. And again, we do have a few amendments to conditions that staff's been working on with the applicant, but I promise it's not as many as the last one. Um, this condition thirty-one uh is proposed to modify slightly the condition. Um, to require a six-foot public utilities easement along public frontages. And the applicant and the engineering department will determine when public utilities easements are needed along the private roads inside of the development. Um, condition thirty-nine E, uh, the applicant requested and and the city agrees that to remove storm drainage as part of the impact condition. Um, all storm drain facilities will be privately maintained, so there shouldn't be an impact. Um, the requirement for public maintenance of storm drain facilities. Um, condition sixty-three is regarding a continuous maintenance plan for the private um facilities and open space. Um, this just modifies slightly the timing of when they would submit that plan and have it reviewed and recorded for the city. So it would be prior to final occupancy rather than approval of the final map. And then as we previously discussed, the proposed uh condition five is to change all of the setbacks. Um, and that were proposed to add these cantilever and architectural element encroachments. As well as change the corner to be measured from the curb uh to the residence and curb to the fence uh rather than from the um property line. And then we'd also like to add a uh side setback for the Paseo units again to be zero um at lot line. And then for porches, just to clarify, that porches can encroach into setbacks up to four feet. So those are the changes for condition five of the CUP resolution. And then finally, um, condition twelve of the site and architectural resolution is the same condition about continuous maintenance. And so we would be proposing again to change the timing of this, and then also there was some verbiage that didn't match. So this verbiage that's proposed exactly matches the other condition on the tentative map. With that, um, staff recommends that the planning commission review the applicant's requests. Receive all written and oral testimony regarding a proposal, make the following three motions. First would be to adopt a resolution approving best tentative map twenty twenty-one dash one. With the amendments to conditions thirty-one, thirty-nine E and sixty-three as discussed. Secondly, adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit twenty twenty-one dash six for planning unit development. With amendments to condition five as discussed. And then finally, adopt a resolution approving site and architectural review twenty twenty-one dash four with amendments to condition twelve as discussed. Thank you. Tried to be great for a very long presentation, but I'd be happy to answer questions, and I believe that the applicant's team is also online. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. I do have a couple of questions. Do you know where on the uh set of plans that we're looking at? That they address accessibility? Know how many accessible units are being provided? And I don't see any accessible parking on the site plan. That's one question. The other question is on the setbacks, am I correct to say that? The applicant is asking for a reduction to three feet to the to the uh face of the garage. And then that would mean that the eighteen-foot bay projection would be less than three feet to the property line. Is that correct?
That would be correct, yes. So it would be three feet to the garage and then three feet to the residence. And then um they would allow those, those second-floor cantilevers would be allowed to come that eighteen inches, a foot and a half into that three-foot setback. And then the ADA parking is throughout the site, and there's one here near the leasing office. There's one located here um on the southern portion of the site. Um. There's four in total. I'd have to, I'd have to look for them.
So I I I I believe without really researching the building code that uh these setbacks, front setbacks. The three-foot setbacks, they're primarily at the front, so that the applicant probably is. I think that normally if you're less than three feet to the property line, you you are not allowed any openings in that wall. But I think because of the drive or the street, I think they're they're probably getting flexibility there. Without really getting too far into the building, technical building code aspects. But normally, uh, on the side, for the five-foot, if you have a porch or a structure within. Anything within ten feet has to be a one-hour fire rating with a residential permit, residential occupancy. On the sides, if you're going to have a porch or any structure that is made out of combustible construction, that would have to be protected. Uh, but what primarily my my main issue is that the only accessibility feature on the floor plan is for the manager's office. I don't see any, I don't see any uh adaptable or accessible floor floor layout. So none of the bathrooms meet accessibility requirements unless they have a uh some program in or some information that. Additional information that we're not looking at tonight.
Yeah, we do have uh the Kipers, uh John and um Michael Kuiper, who are the developers. They they actually, they're actually the ones who are currently constructing the Westfield development right next to the adjacent to the east of this project. And they actually have these uh multi-family units spread throughout this commission, the planning commission approved. Um, there's some single-family homes, I think it's a total of a hundred and fifty-six. There's some single family homes. I think it's a total of a hundred and fifty-six units with, with, I think it's like twenty-six duplexes throughout, spread throughout. And so they're going to carry over those just duplexes and triplexes for this project and they'll, they can address, they can address.
I'm sure they're, they're very well acquainted with the accessibility requirements.
Yes, yes.
I would like to, is it proper to get their commentary now or shall I open up the public hearing?
City twenty-eight percent, would, would that be okay per Chairperson Hugoyd's question to allow the applicant to speak without opening the public hearing? To get the applicant's comments?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would the applicant please address the commission on the questions that I had?
Commissioner Hugoyd, before we do that, I'm wondering if it might be better if we just ask questions because there might be other questions that come up that the applicant. Will need to answer for us. And I'm wondering if it might be better if you just hear from all the commissioners and hear their questions and then ask them, the applicant to respond?
That's correct. Thank you. Thank you, Roxanne. Yes. Any other questions or comments from the commission on the staff report?
So I have one, I have one, I think, quick question if you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, so my question is just simply about getting into this complex. It, it looks like there's just one way to get in and one way to get out. So if you're, it's through Buena Vista and it's at that entrance where that, that big circle appears on the map. And so I just was wondering if the applicant could address that a little bit more. And the reason that I'm raising that is just because of concerns, like traffic concerns. And, you know, the fact that this project represents like over two hundred and fifty cars potentially. That could be coming in and out of that complex. And so I just wanted to hear a little bit more about the flow of traffic in and out.
Okay, yes, and we can definitely have the applicant address that, but I, I will just add. So the main entrance here is off Buena Vista as you stated, but it also connects through to Carriage Road, which is within the Mirabella. Subdivision, the Westfield subdivision to the west. And so this Carriage Road is a through road and then there's the, a secondary access at Gonzalez. And the, the Mirabella Westfield subdivision also has northern and two accesses further to the east to Miller. So this subdivision does have two access points. And I will also note that originally the proposal was to have this as a gated community with a gate here and a gate on carriage. But for the fire department, they requested that it be open. There's nothing in our code to require gated versus un-gated, but the applicant did open up these roads. So they will be privately maintained but publicly accessible roads. And again, two access points.
Roxanne, is any other questions or comments you have?
Well, that's it. Thank you.
I'd like to hear from the project applicant regarding the accessibility features.
Thank you, Chairperson Hugoyd. We do have Michael Kuiper and John Kuiper on the line.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, yes, this is Michael Kuiper. I would like to get to the accessibility issues. We actually have our architect on the line as well as Mark Zonrich in the lobby. But I was hoping to kind of comment on the project gen, more generally. So I don't know if you would like to first speak with our architect about the accessibility or do you like me to go first?
If you have just general comments, I would prefer that, your general comments when I open up the public hearing.
Okay.
What I'm specifically asking for from the project applicant is how he's addressing the accessible requirements.
Right, and, and he is here in the Zoom, our architect, and he's ready to answer on, on that. But I don't know if we can unmute him or pull him in. Abraham, that's Mark Zonrich.
Very well, yes.
Thank you so much.
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, good evening. Thank you. To address your question in terms of the accessibility, the plan for units have been designed to be adaptable ADA units. I'm not sure if the like turning radii and stuff were shown on the floor plans, but they are designed to be accessible. In addition to the ADA spaces on site for parking, the four spaces, there are two that are located by the leasing office. And then two in the southwestern corner, or southeastern corner, I'm sorry. And they're notated by the hatch kind of spacing that would be the van accessible space.
Thank you for that. I do know that adaptable units, you don't have to put the grab bars in right away, but they have to meet the clearance requirements and there are some issues. But I, I know that a lot of these issues will be reviewed during the building permit stage. It's not for us to really get overly technical. But I did want to, I have to say is that what we're approving here, I did need some commentary on how accessibility was going to be addressed. Because it's a very important issue these days, so. And even at the planning stage, we, we look at accessible routes.
Sure.
You know, accessible routes need to be shown from the public sidewalk into the accessible units or adaptable units. So typically, we do call for accessible routes to be included on your graphic presentations here. Although, you know, I'd like to see that in the future. Although I, I know that when it goes through the, again, when it's routed through the, the permit review, they're, they're, they're going to really take a very, very stringent look at that. So this is something I, I feel as an architect, I feel compelled to bring up in the discussion. That I did not see the clearance requirements for the adaptable units. So it's just, I, I needed to get, I needed to get your response to that, being, judging it is, it is important. And you do know that regarding property lines, that if you're less than five feet, that you'll have the fire rate projections and also porches and all that.
Yes, we have taken a look at that and I, I'm not sure if it was you or someone else notated that. One of the ways that the California Building Code looks at it is assumed property lines. In which case, when we have an alley or a street, it's assumed to be, you know, at the center line of, of that thoroughfare. Same, similarly along the biseo there, you know, there would be an assumed property line in between those structures. And we have taken a look at that.
Yeah, I think in your fronts, I think there is like, it, it, there's an exception for the fire rating when you're overlooking the street or public. Right away of street or alley of such, such or drive. So I think your fronts are okay, but I think you, you need to, on those side ones, you need to pay some close attention to, to the fire rating requirements on the side setbacks.
Yes, we are.
Okay, and also allowable openings because you can't draw.
Correct.
You can't have imaginary property line when you're only five feet from the fence. So they're, they're gonna, when it goes through four le, they're gonna ask you to do a calculation on the allowable openings on those side, side yards.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, all right, well.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was, I think we're ready. If any other comments or questions, I'll open up the public hearing now at twenty-one minutes to eight. Speaker cards?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Hugoyd. We do have some speaker cards. We have Michael Kuiper.
Hello again, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, let me hear you.
Hello, great, okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Michael Kuiper. I am here on behalf of the applicant sixteen twenty Buena Vista LLC. So first and foremost, I just want to thank planning and engineering staff for all their assistance and feedback in preparing the plan before you tonight. Thank you, Eva, so much for that excellent presentation. This project has evolved many times since our first proposals to planning commission back in twenty fifteen. We're very excited with the final outcome and if I may, I'd just like to quickly give a bit of background. And then I can turn it back to you if you have any questions about the project. So the applicant is an affiliate of Kuiper Homes. We are a family-owned home building company. We've been in business for over forty years and active in Hollister for the past five. Currently, as Eva mentioned, we are building our Westfield project, which is located immediately next door to this sixteen twenty Buena Vista property. For years now, we've been hearing the city express a desire for more multifamily housing. At Westfield, the planning staff actually suggested that we build twenty-six duet units in addition to the single family homes in the subdivision. For this project, Abraham and Eva asked us to propose a percentage of the subdivision that would be multifamily. We initially agreed on twenty percent, but then we reconsidered once we started getting public feedback on our duet rental units at Westfield. The duet units have been incredibly well received. As of today, we have tenants in all sixteen of the units that we have completed thus far. And so between the success at Westfield Duets and the city's need for more multifamily housing, we decided to go all in. And the plan before you tonight is one hundred percent multifamily with private streets. Just like our duet units at Westfield, the product here is designed to blend in with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. Although this is an attached product, each unit has a two-car garage and a backyard, so these truly live like single family homes. For Hollister residents looking for the single family lifestyle but not ready to buy a home, these, these will be a terrific option. As Eva mentioned, we're also adding a point six-three acre expansion to the Westfield Community Park. Including a new playground and a dog park, which will benefit all residents in the area. And also, just so you know, our intent is to hold these units for a long time. Kuiper Homes has built eighty-four similar attached townhomes in Turlock fifteen years ago, also surrounded by single family homes. And we are proud to own those townhomes to this day. We would love an opportunity to do the same thing here in Hollister. And now if you have any questions, we're here to answer them. And we also have our architect, Mark Zonrich. And our engineer, Tony DiMello, if you have any technical questions about the plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael. Our next speaker is Caroline Tikaniuk.
Okay, are you able to hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
I am new to Hollister and my family lives off of Vista View. And we are concerned about the density and the amount of traffic on Buena Vista. We expect that there's going to be more traffic once Westfield is completed. But this seems like a very high-density project. That will bring, bring a lot of cars and traffic congestion into that one main entrance on Buena Vista. I don't know how feasible it will be to expect people to use the carriage. Access point on the east side. And even if they do, I think it still is going to be a tremendous amount of traffic on Buena Vista. And to the comment that people in Hollister want to see high-density or medium-density housing. Not, that's not what I'm hearing in our neighborhood. It seems like a very high-dense project. And you said that the previous projects have been just a few units, like ten units total, a couple of duplexes. This is a lot of duplexes. This is a lot of triplexes. And then all of the requests for changes are to really like reduce the setbacks. And to, to increase the lot coverage from fifty percent to seventy percent. And taking things down from ten feet to three feet and five feet to zero feet. And it just seems overly dense. It seems like a lot of congestion for that area, especially considering the Westfield development. And then also the fact that it's all ventured, that it's not going to be any homeowners. That is also not exactly attractive. I think that a lot of people like having neighbors who are homeowners as opposed to a high occupancy of just renters. So those are the comments that I've been hearing in my neighborhood and those are my concerns after listening to the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline.
We have no more speakers. Chairperson Hugoyd.
No further speakers. I'll close the public hearing now at quarter minutes, quarter to eight. Bring it back to the commission. Gentlemen, Roxanne, comments?
My, I mean, my only comment is like, I, I have the same concerns that the previous speaker just mentioned. I think it's a great project and I do agree that we need rental units in Hollister. My concern is the location. Buena Vista has been impacted by a lot of development in recent years and it's increased traffic and. A lot of concerns raised in various forums around that as well as issues around safety and then schools. So that's my concern. I'm just really concerned about the location. I, I think that we do need this kind of project because there is a real shortage of rental units. But I'm really concerned about that, the location.
Thank you, Roxanne. There's things that I, I, I think that are very attractive about this project. The, the designs of the, the units, I, I think are nicely done. They're extending the park, which is, I think, a, a major, major feature on this project. Because it gives a kind of a focal point. I know that the traffic, eventually we're, we're gonna connect Buena Vista to one fifty-six. I think that would, definitely that's in the pipeline. I don't know where we are on that specifically, when it will be done. But it is, it is going to be, I'm, I'm sure it's, it's gonna be part of the special study area in the general plan that we discussed. So hopefully that'll, that'll help the traffic in the future once that connection is made. It is compatible with the zone, the R-three overlay zone. So that's, that's the, when, back in two thousand and five, that's, that's the vision we had for that area. I know Buena Vista is heavily trafficked. But this is from a, based on a community need, we do, we do have certainly a need for rental properties. Albeit this is a market rate rental. It would be nice to have some affordability features in it in the future. When we get through the general plan update process, we have an inclusionary zone, that's, it's gonna change. But based on the, looking at it from conformity to the existing land use. The type of project, the type of housing that certainly is needed. And some of the features with the, including the expansion of the park, I, I would. I would, I would go along with it, but knowing that there's gonna be some, when it goes through the billing department, it's gonna be, there's gonna be some fine tuning on the, regarding the accessibility that I mentioned earlier. Those are my comments.
Unfortunately, we don't live in a perfect world. I think this is something that the city really needs. It's like the commissioner said, we could use some low income, but, you know, we need something. Or we do nothing and then people move further and further away. I, I, I like the project. The ADA concerns are important and should be worked out. But it's a, a solid-looking, good-looking project, the park being expanded. I mean, the, the, the company is showing that they're invested in the city. And if they stay in the ownership role, I think it would be a really good addition to the city. Yes, it's dense. But you've got to do something, I think.
Thank you, Jose. So?
Regarding the. The ADA parking, I, I know that there's four spots, two at the leasing office and then two, and I believe the, could be correct, I mean, could be incorrect. But I believe it was the southwest corner. I like to see maybe it spread out a little bit more. That way, you know, it's, it's, it's a pretty large community. I like to see it spread out a little bit. Looks like there is a possibility that it could be done. So I'd like to see that. I, I really like the, the idea of the fact that the park is gonna be extended. That's really good. Kids need a place to, to play instead of going, you know, to the school to go park. The, the one thing that, that I, that I'd like to see, which I, I, I don't, I don't think it's necessarily our authority to do, but just a personal comment is, maybe instead of just having the, the play structure, maybe add some swings or something to it, some a little bit different. I, I have seen some of these play structures and other developments, very tiny, not used, it's very limited in space. I like to it looks like there, there's plenty of space maybe to, to add like a swing component to it. I think that'd be great. Again, I don't think that's necessarily in our preview, just a personal comment. You know, to address the issue of, you know, it's not what, what residents in that particular area are desiring, you know. Like, like Commissioner Fernandez says, this isn't a perfect world. I, I think this is, the townhouses and duplexes, I think they're a better option as opposed to apartments. Because it does give renters a feel of a sense of a real home as opposed to apartment. Nothing against apartments, because they are needed as well. But I do like that aspect. I, I, I don't think that it, it brings down the value of a neighborhood by having these duplexes and triplexes. I don't think that it's necessarily gonna attract a bad element. Just because people are renters doesn't necessarily mean that they're bad people. I think that there are some, some people that make decent money that just can't afford to purchase. And, and in my profession, I see that a lot. And it's better than having to live in an apartment. So I think this is a, this is a need that are, you know, for our community. I'm glad that we're seeing projects like this come about. You know, as, as someone who, who lived in an apartment years ago, if, if I had something like this, I definitely would have tried to, to, to live there as opposed to an apartment. So I think that we're giving people an opportunity to have like a home environment, especially for the kids, to have a backyard and, and those kind of things. I think that's great. But yeah, I, I, I really like this, this project. I think it's great for, for our city. And yeah, I'd like to see more of stuff like this throughout the city. You know, this, this is in one area, but it's one developer. Hopefully, we can attract more developers to build something like this.
Thank you, Seth. Seth?
I think the, one of the concerns in regards to the parking was already addressed. That was brought up. This definitely helps a much-needed void in which there is no rentals available. You know, even the past planning manager was in that situation, Brian Swanson, when he moved here. He couldn't find a, a place to, to stay. So I, I definitely see this as, as filling that void. The other thing that I like is, is that the, the developer has a stake in the game in which he is gonna manage it and, and own it. And, you know, there's some accountability with that. So, you know, next time they want to do a project or a proposal, you know, you can always look at this and see how well they're maintaining it. So I, I definitely like that buy-in from, from the developers to, to, you know, be willing to take on this project and own it as well. So as far as the, the, you know, the traffic, those are always concerned when there's changes going on. And, you know, that's something where, you know, the, the city would have to work with the community to do traffic studies and, and improvements in that sense. So that way, this is a, a good quality of life for everybody and, and the surrounding neighbors.
Any other comments? I entertain a motion on this item.
I move to adopt resolution approving vesting tentative map twenty-twenty-one dash one with amendments to the conditions thirty-one, thirty-nine E, and sixty-three as discussed.
I have a motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, this is on the tentative map? Jose, which, which motion is this referring to?
This is the motion number one.
Tentative map, okay. I have, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Huboy, Jason Epperson again. I, I'm sorry, if we could do it by roll call, please, each of these.
Yes.
Thank you.
Abraham?
Yes, thank you, Chairperson Huboy. We will now begin the roll call. And just for the record, it is for tentative map. For the tentative map, number, vesting tentative map, number twenty-twenty-one dash one, which is Planning Commission Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash fourteen. And the roll call will begin at, at this time. Commissioner Seth Munzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Salvador Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Jose Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Roxanne Stevens?
Nay.
Commissioner, Commissioner Chairperson David Huboy?
Yes.
Thank you. The vesting tentative map passes four to one.
Now I entertain a motion for the conditional use permit.
I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit twenty-twenty-one dash six for a planned unit development with amendments to condition five as discussed.
Further discussion? Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second on the conditional use permit. We'll have a roll call after I ask for, all in favor to say aye. All in favor, say aye. And we'll roll call.
Thank you, Chairperson Huboy. We will begin the roll call at this time. Just for the record, it is for conditional use permit number twenty-twenty-one dash six, and the PC resolution is twenty-twenty-one dash fifteen, and we will commence the roll call at this time. Commissioner Seth Munzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Salvador Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Jose Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Roxanne Stevens?
Nay.
Chairperson David Huboy?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes four to one.
That moves us to the site and architectural review. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to adopt a resolution proven site and architectural review twenty-twenty-one dash four with amendments to the conditions twelve as discussed.
Any further discussion on the motion?
That was PC resolution.
Thank you. PC resolution twenty-twenty-one dash sixteen.
Thank you.
Do I have a second on the site and architectural?
I'll second.
And I will call for a roll, roll call vote after I ask for the vote. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. A roll call, please.
Yes, certainly. We will begin the roll call now. Commissioner Seth Munzer?
Aye.
Commissioner Salvador Mora?
Aye.
Commissioner Jose Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Roxanne Stevens?
Nay.
Chairperson David Huboy?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes four to one.
Congratulations and good luck on your project.
Good luck and thank you for bringing this project.
That concludes our public hearing items for this evening. Now we go on to new business.
Commissioner Huboy?
Oh.
Just wanted to remind you of the
The minutes?
The minutes.
I knew I was rolling too well there. Okay, I'm going to ask, and I know we have two, Seth and Roxanne needed to abstain because they were absent. But from myself and Salvador Mora and Jose, I'd ask for approval of minutes dated April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
Aye, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. I don't think we need a roll call vote for that.
I think we should. Let's just confirm. City, city attorney Epperson?
Yes, I hate to be a pain. I know it's but roll call, please.
Is that only required because?
Because of Zoom.
Jason, I appreciate it. Okay, let's have a roll call.
Thank you so much. So I will begin with the roll call now for the minutes of April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one for the planning commission. And we will begin with planning commissioner Seth Munzer.
Abstain.
Planning commissioner Salvador Mora?
Aye.
Planning commissioner Jose Fernandez?
Aye.
Thinking commissioner Roxanne Stevens?
Abstain.
And Chairperson Huboy?
Yes.
Thank you. The minutes for the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one planning commission have been approved.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience on that. Now we go into new business.
Thank you, Chairperson Huboy. No, no new business from staff.
No new business. Okay. Any old business?
Thank you, Chairperson Huboy. No old business at this time.
All right, you're welcome. Planning Department reports?
We do have planning department reports. We would like to announce that the city council has scheduled a special city council meeting for June twenty-second at the council chambers and through Zoom. Through Zoom, we're not sure if it's gonna be in person at this time yet. It appears that it may be, but to provide that option. But it's gonna be for the city council to listen to the policy implementations for the general plan update, similar to what we listened to on Monday. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be live, and we encourage everybody to attend that city council meeting.
Great. Thank you, Abraham.
Abraham, can you say?
Yeah, yeah. Commissioner Stevens, you cut off a little bit, but I'm, I'm assuming you, I said you were wanting to know the date, to repeat the date? Yeah. So it's gonna be a special city council meeting on June twenty-second. And the timing, I would have to corroborate with my colleague.
It is six P M.
Six, okay. Normally, the city council meetings start at six-thirty, well, after closed session. So, but it's, it'll be at six P M. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And also, just wanted to let you all know that city council did adopt a resolution essentially not having any meetings in July. So, and that goes for all commissions as well. So just, we do have our next planning commission meeting on June twenty-fourth, and then that's a regular planning commission meeting. But just in case you are looking into possibility of vacation time or whatnot, just note that July, we have no planning commission meeting. Thank you.
Gee, with no planning commission meeting, what am I gonna do? I think you all know what I do.
Play guitar a little.
Play guitar. Or sketch. I like to go sketch. Okay, that's my planning commissioner report. Any other planning commissioner reports?
No, I'd just like to thank Commissioner Stevens, as well as Commissioner Huboy for their work on the general plan update. It's a huge task that you guys have, have taken on. Definitely appreciate all you guys' hard work, as well as city staff, everyone involved, including our community members that are part of GPAC. GPAC, yes. We appreciate all your work. We appreciate placeworks for all the hard work, and we look forward to the final product.
Great. Thank you, Seth. And I do have
Thank you.
I do have one, another announcement that on a special weekend and remembrance of on Monday, Memorial Day, and I just want to give my heartfelt thanks to all the people that have given service to our country, and especially those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom. So that's a, a very special day, and I just want to say that that we have a memorable Memorial Day for our community.
Great, thank you.
So that
I wonder if I could just ask a question of the, the staff. So I had sent an email to Abraham earlier this month about a new ordinance twelve oh two that was passed by the city council, and I got some, I guess some misinformation possibly, or just some misunderstanding about what the ordinance was about. And I was just wondering if the staff could speak to that. And it's really, it's about having contact. Okay, so that, so I think it's stated, like, non-public contact with people of interest or any agenda items. I was just wondering if you could speak to that, because I, I did get some
Roxanne, we didn't hear that last part.
You were cutting out.
Sorry, sorry about that. I, I know I'm having some horrible, like, microphone and audio issues. I really apologize. I will get this resolved before next meeting. I, I just wanted to get some information or just an overview of the ordinance twelve oh two that was recently passed by the city council. Did you get that?
Yes, yes. Abraham, can you respond to Roxanne's request there?
Yes, yes, absolutely. So the city council did adopt an ordinance recently. And the ordinance twelve oh two, trying to look, look it up, but I, I did. It, it is, it is an ordinance that was adopted in regards to, part of it included the whether, whether the city council, kind of a point of order of in regards to meeting with applicants or meeting with people in the community for, for projects. I don't have it in front of me right now. I'm not sure if the city attorney may have it. But I remember, I remember that email. I remember speaking to our city attorney in regards to that. And the language itself, I'm not sure, I don't, I'm trying to look it up on our phone. Commissioner Stevens, if you have it, maybe it would be good to read it out. But I recall the city attorney.
Okay, so I'm gonna try to. Hopefully, you can hear. And the part of the part that I want to clarify is that there is, there's some limits put on the city council councils' contact with various groups regarding agenda items. And included in that are commissions. So that, I'm, I'm assuming that's us, right? So I just wanted to ask about clarification around what does that really look like? And what are the limits?
Commissioner Stevens, if I might jump in here for a second? Perhaps we can put that on a future agenda and not only talk about the role of the city councilmen and regarding, or city councilwomen, and regarding getting requests to talk about projects prior to public hearings. We can also talk about this planning commission.
Sure.
And some of the issues that, that, that we face when we're asked to meet with developers or meet with applicants prior to public hearing. If we can put that on the agenda, would that, would that help, Roxanne? Does that give Abraham some time to research it and get the specific information that you're requesting?
And, and Abraham, I just forwarded the email that you sent to me with that ordinance.
Perfect.
And then I'm wondering if maybe you can forward it to all the commissioners, so that then they have an opportunity to review it before next meeting?
Absolutely, Commissioner Stevens. That, that is, that is a great idea. I can do that. And that way, we can have it. You're welcome. And, yeah, and we can have ours, we can talk with our city attorney to possibly provide some clarification in regards to that. But in, in my recollection is that the planning commission was able to speak to people from the developers who are interested in and talking to the commissioners to explain, as long as, as long as it is disclosed, when the public hearing opens up, the commissioner discloses that they met with the applicant or their team in regards to the project that's proposed. But we can, we can certainly coordinate with our city attorney and have the city attorney potentially clarify that at, at the next meeting as you requested. City attorney Epperson, would you like to add anything to that, or?
Only I would agree with, with what you said, Mr. Prado. And I am getting a little nervous about discussing something that isn't agendized on tonight's meeting, even though it's obvious the commission is not reaching any, any common mind about an issue, still even discussing is we're starting to get near the edge of, 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 of something we shouldn't be doing. But we can, we can address it at a future meeting if everyone would like to.
Yeah, I think that would be
Great.
Yeah, it's the best thing. That way we can research it, because I, I have read through that ordinance. My opinion is very poorly written, because it's very contradictory as well. So hopefully, we get some clarification between now and then.
Right. And, and I have, still have my, my dog-eared League of Cities handbook on being a planning commissioner. I'm gonna look that up again, too, because I've, I've looked it up before. And I just want to quote what it says in the League of Cities handbook. And I just want to quote what it says in the League of Cities handbook regarding that, see what they have to say about it.
Yeah.
So, but I appreciate you bringing that up, Roxanne, because that's a very important topic that not only applies to elected officials, but applies to appointed officials such as this body, too.
Agreed.
Okay. Any other reports? Seth, me, Jose?
Got nothing for you.
Okay. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, roll call.
Do we need a roll call, Attorney Epperson?
I think there's no consequence to doing that one by roll.
I'm just giving it back to you, Jason.
They're going to bring it back. Call us back tonight.
Thank you for attending and participating.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
I quickly ask, who was the second on that? I'm sorry.
Salvador Mora?
Thank you so much.